I'd like to call to order the work session on December 11, 2017. We still have one more council person coming. I'm sure someone said she's on her way. So, we have two items on the agenda tonight, and I'd like to remind council to refrain from asking questions until the staff presentations are complete. We'll go to 3.1. In the follow-up, from the July 17, 2017 work session, staff is prepared to provide council with an update on the nonprofit interest in the four-owned facilities at Litchfield Road and Western Avenue, in order to inform and have further discussion and policy direction regarding the disposition of these facilities. Councilman Osborn just walked in, so she is seated at the table. Christine Smith, Facilities and Fleet Manager, and Christina Plant, Neighborhood Services, will be presenting. Good evening, ladies.
Good evening.
Mayor, before we start, I have a question.
I recognize Councilman Stiff.
If we're going to be going through the bids that were received for these particular properties, that's what it appears, kind of, sort of? I'm wondering if this is an e-session item, if we're going to be negotiating this later on, before we even got started?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think it's designed to be at a higher level, just to show you generally, council asks us to go see if there's any opportunity or interest from public, from nonprofits out there. This is really not drilling down into the details of the bids. I think at the end of the presentation, we'll present a couple of options, how to move forward. If this is the route you want to go, we probably would get together with you later in e-session and get direction on how you want to negotiate.
So, it's information, and we're not making a decision at the table tonight?
Correct. Unless the direction is, yes, we're interested in exploring further this nonprofit opportunity.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
So, everybody understand the role? Any questions? All right, ladies, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Christina Plant, Neighborhood Services Coordinator, and this evening, let's see, we will be, Christine Smith is here to provide a refresher on the background, how we got to where we are now, and then I'll give a brief overview of the nonprofit responses, which the narratives were emailed to you for your perusal. Also, some other considerations for your contemplation during the discussion, and then we'll turn it back over to you to pick up your discussion where you left off back in July. Christine?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So, I was here on July 17 to provide you a brief overview of the facilities located at Western and Litchfield. We talked a little bit about the age, the conditions, and some options of moving forward. Those options included selling, demo, lease, partnership, and as a result of that discussion, staff received direction to move forward with the nonprofit avenue. So, we're here to loop back with you, since we've gone through that process, and later in this presentation, Christina will give you some more information about the proposals we received. So, just as a quick refresher, we have four vacant buildings, around 9,500 square feet, 47,000 square feet as far as the acreage involved. We have about 50 parking spaces, and some of the challenges with this location is the aging of the facilities and parking. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to Christina.
Thank you. So, when we last left off, we had direction from council to explore nonprofit interest, and we did that by releasing an RFI, a Request for Information. It was put out on August 31, and it was promoted via email, press release, our website, and social media. We conducted two facility tours for people who were interested in seeing the facility before expressing an interest. Twenty-nine attendees representing 15 nonprofit organizations attended. The deadline for the RFI was September 29, and respondents were instructed to include a program overview and proposed use of the facility. Documents related to economic and financial standing, such as an IRS Form 990, were also requested. The narrative portion of the responses were forwarded to you all. We got five proposals from four nonprofits. That is, All Faith Community Services expressed an interest in using all of the facilities to provide a one-stop resource center. A variety of direct service partners were to be determined. Catitude Galleries and Studio was interested, they submitted two proposals. It appears their first choice is Western Avenue building only, and then the second choice would be, depending upon the square footage, the Old City Hall. They would provide hands-on art workshops and classes, as well as an art gallery. There's an LLC formed by Palm Valley Church, Community Impact, and they are interested in the Litchfield facilities to provide nonreligious services to community members, such as parenting classes, tutoring, and emergency assistance, for example. United Goodyear Firefighters and United Goodyear Firefighters Charities also expressed an interest in the old call center, also the old fire station, to be used as a museum and offices, and meeting space, potentially a public event venue. All of the proposals were considered responsive in that they comply with the invitation, and there were no red flags in the financial documents provided with the proposals per finance. Some organizations have more fiscal resources immediately available to them than others. Across the board, it's unclear if any financial support is needed from the city to achieve the proposed uses. We were just checking for interest. Some other considerations for you, when you continue your discussion, is that while staff was tasked with assessing nonprofit interests to help inform the discussion, there was, we did become aware during the process of at least three commercial businesses who have expressed an interest in purchasing some of the facilities. That information, I believe, was relayed to you last week by Rorick. Also, we wanted to remind you that before we revert to the discussions, just some reminders on some constraints on the properties. Parking is limited, and the city's general plan designates this site as a community commercial. However, some commercial zoning district permitted uses were deemed not appropriate for the area. Instead, wishing to focus on reflecting the pedestrian-oriented design of the buildings and coexistence with the historic Goodyear residential neighborhood which surrounds most of the site, the area was rezoned Western Avenue PAD. The stated intent of that planned area development is, quote, "This PAD is an effort to preserve the character and enhance redevelopment opportunities of the northeast corner of this intersection." The PAD affects an area of about three acres, and currently, the city owns over 70% of the total acreage. That's the site we're talking about today. And there are four additional private property owner neighbor stakeholders within the PAD, shown in the pink, green, yellow, and orange on the map. Also, the site is across the street from a vacant shopping center, and approximately 95 acres of vacant undeveloped land/superfund site stretching to the north towards City Little context regarding the existing service providers in the area, especially for the benefit of the public who might be looking for resources. The city's IGA partner in human services, Care First Avondale Resource and Housing Center, is a five-to-six-minute walk, or a little over a quarter of a mile, from the site, and they offer a variety of human services through 54 partner organizations, from programs for parents with children, birth to five, to assistance applying for access and WIC. And they are the Regional CAP, Community Action Program, providing emergency financial assistance for housing, gas, and electric utilities. Also, right across the street from City Hall is Goodwill Career Center at Litchfield and Van Buren. Besides the familiar donation and secondhand retail center, this location features one-on-one career coaching, access to computers, printers, internet, phones, and fax machines, as well as connections to job leads, on-the-job training and opportunities, and many more employment and workforce development services. I think a lot of people don't know that about that Goodwill. There's also five official St. Mary's affiliate food banks or pantries located in a two-square-mile area containing the proposed site. This does not include church food pantries that operate independent of St. Mary's resources. So, here we are, back with the options we left off with in July, to talk about the potential for selling, demoing, leasing, or some combination of those options. We hope that council will find the information we provided today useful in informing your discussion about policy and future direction to staff regarding the site.
Thank you. Are you finished?
Yes.
All right. So, council discussion. Councilwoman Pizzillo?
I've got a couple of questions. If it was a sale to an outside party, would it be in violation to the current PAD, excuse me, or what type of use would still fall within that PAD? Because if I understood you correctly, there's certain uses that can only go into that PAD the way it's zoned right now, if I understood you correctly.
Bear with me one second, I have some notes.
Take your time.
So, there are principal permitted uses and potential uses with a permit, and then there are some prohibited uses.
Like, yeah, let Katie come up. Yeah, there you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Pizzillo. Most commercial uses are permitted in the PAD. We prohibited those uses that you might expect might not fit something that's so close to residents. So, we prohibited non-charter financial institutions, which is payday loans, pawn shops, adult bookstores, automobile service stations, automotive bodywork.
Okay.
Those kind of uses. But office, retail, services, those types of uses are permitted.
Are permitted, yeah, okay. When it comes to the nonprofits, I assume some of those buildings aren't up to code. Is that a fair assumption?
Councilman Pizzillo, actually, if the buildings are not touched, they're at code, but if there's any changes, those would need to be brought up to the current code, any type of remodel.
So, if we were to lease it to somebody, even if it was for a dollar for a nonprofit, and there was something in there, I'm just doing a hypothetical, that even if it is up to code, would, I wouldn't say it'd be dangerous because maybe asbestos, whatever, and again, I don't know what's in there, would we be liable for any injuries inside that building, so it's still ours, and we would be leasing it? I guess it's probably one for the attorney.
Right, for a full discussion, that's probably better in e-session.
Okay.
There's certainly disclosures that have been made, and there would be provisions made in contracts to attempt to address those issues.
I realize that, but even if you attempt to address them, you still might have a problem. So, okay, I won't go any further than that right now. Thank you.
Are you finished? Anybody else? Sherri? Laura Towne?
Okay, this is going to be trying to pick my words, so I don't get us somewhere back in e-session.
You're the lawyer, you can do that, can't you?
We did receive information about some other interests as well, and just kind of tell you, my direction on this is what I see, is I would like to explore that in combination with some of these, and see what is the best fit for the neighborhood, to rehabilitate that neighborhood, knowing that it's residential. I can't go into what I think would be a good combination, but I think we need to have a discussion, that we can actually talk about those, and this one, and how they actually are going to fit for what's best for that part of Goodyear.
Councilman Osborn.
Thank you. Thank you, Sherri, for that. So, on a shelf somewhere is the Litchfield Road revitalization.
Yes, it is.
Task force book.
We ran that committee, yeah.
That had all of those things, you know, brainstorming and great ideas. You know, this is new. When we had gone out and had this discussion, it was for nonprofits, and so now, you know, some ideas are floating around of change, which, you know, I think that's great, to look at all. And it's been a while, but, you know, that was contemplated a few years back. So, there are some things that our citizens have said, hey, what about this, what about that, what about this idea? So, that might be something that we look at. One question to follow up on Councilwoman Pizzillo's question was that, because I'm not good at how length of area are the neighbors, there's 10 homes directly behind there, and we have a church that took over the old True Value, so is there that liquor license 500-foot situation anywhere? Because I don't know size, I'm not good at that. So, that's my question.
Where's Katie?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Osborne. Just off the top of my head, that liquor license separation doesn't apply to liquor, the type of liquor license you get with a restaurant. It only applies to, like, a liquor store, so I don't think we'd have an issue for the type of uses we'd want to attract in the area with the church in proximity.
Okay, wasn't sure. Thank you.
And we did have retail in another area, but the developer or the owner, remember right on Litchfield, that we're going to try to do retail. So, Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, I think the area is going to start changing as well. I like that the church and the businesses there, they're doing well, and then also the shopping center that's for sale right now across the street, and I'd like to see a combination of a few of these as well. So, it could be a combination of a few of them. So, I like the idea of having the lease, but then I think there might be some other things in there that we can look at, especially with the private interest as well. I think there's lots of good options, so I'd like to look at them more closely.
I'm going to ask that question. You said the shopping center is for sale. It's been for sale for a long, long time, and they've not taken any offers, so has that changed?
The sign just went up, I saw last week, saw some signs for sale up there.
Does staff know about this? Can you address that, please?
I mean, we've tried for 15 years to get them to do something to that point.
Now, they're ready, it looks like.
No, I doubt it.
Yeah, Mayor, council, they did just decide, we just received notice that they decided to put it for sale. That actually wasn't for sale before, but it just went on, I think it was within the last maybe month, so it is for sale.
Hallelujah.
Do you know the asking price?
I do. I called them.
What is it? I believe it's 4.2 million.
And you were the one that found out.
4.2, because we tried to buy it.
I called them.
I believe that's what it is, if I'm correct. It's 4.2 million.
Yeah.
They gave me for 4 million.
Well, we tried to buy it, and they wanted over 2 million.
Not cheap.
Yeah. Yeah. Right.
But nobody, no takers at this time? I mean, this happened so suddenly.
Not that we're aware of.
I didn't know they put online, because they had somebody.
Right, so they just put it on the market.
Gee, there's lots of, that's exciting. That could make a difference in the neighborhood. I mean, if it's handled right, they could have retail in some of the things, a restaurant, or, you know, but are we hoping too positively on this, or is this?
That is an asking price. That's certainly an asking price for it, so we have high hopes, but we need to kind of wait and see. That's what I would say.
Sort of changes what we're doing now, isn't it? Sort of making decisions at this time. Who else would like to ask a?
Well, I'm not going to talk about the shopping center, because that's really not on the agenda, but I'd like to have a conversation after.
I'm glad you picked that up.
Because I do not want to get in trouble again. Okay, so my, I have two concerns. Number one, if we're going to offer the property for sale, or explore someone wanting to buy it outright, then I think we need to advertise it properly and give everyone a shot at it. Apparently, from what I understand, staff mentioned that they, that someone heard about it and made an offer, but we haven't put a sign out, this property is for sale. So, not that we're going to be lucky enough to find someone that will want to take the whole parcel and bulldoze it and build something really large there. I just think we need to look at that. But then, on the other hand, I read from the attorney, the offer, and quite frankly, the price to me is less than the amount of services that our nonprofits would be giving to our residents. They would give three times that amount to the residents, because if we put nonprofits in there, then we would stop some of these IGAs that we're giving to other people, because it would be administered in our own city. That's just my thought. So, there's a way to save money for us and put our money to work here in Goodyear.
Good information. Anybody else have any comments? Councilwoman Pizzillo?
I tend to agree that it would be nice to explore a variety of those options, and then we'll probably end up in exec session somewhere to discuss all the options and then come up with some type of direction. That's what I'm hearing, and that's what I agree with.
I'm hearing a combination of things that people are looking at, so. Yes, Councilman Stiff?
We obviously have two choices tonight. One is we either decide to go and we're going to lease some, or we go to sell them. I mean, it's one or the other. I would, I think, given the interest that we have from the people that are interested in purchasing, I would, I would just assume we go down that avenue. I don't think we should be in the real estate business.
I can't hear that last sentence you're saying.
Given the quality of the people who've expressed interest in those facilities, and sure, they can make a cash offer and say that this is what it is, but we've got to go through due diligence as far as selling it for fair market value, et cetera, but I would, I would just assume not be in the retail business as a community, and I would, I would like to see us explore selling them.
Oh.
So, I'll just say it that way.
And that circumstance could happen. I think what I'd like to see is that we look at the neighborhood and try to do our best with the neighborhood, give them some of the things that they've asked for, as well as some of the help they've asked for. Councilman Osborne?
As we're discussing this, Christine, have there been any kinds of outreach to the neighborhood about this change in thought? No, it's kind of premature, because we, when we've brought ideas to the neighborhood before and gotten their input, and then sort of not followed through on them, I think that fosters the disappointment. I think it's better for us to decide what we think is a good idea, and then check for understanding and make sure we're on the right track.
Okay.
So, going forward, would we, I guess I would, I would ask city manager that maybe if it's email accessible, the old task force, or, well, the old, you know, kind of plan that was given, be just sent to everybody, because it will.
Revitalization plan.
The revitalization plan that we, you know, may look at and think about again, and it does sound, yeah, to council. Yeah, so everybody can see that and see what was discussed, because the neighborhood was involved then, and I just think that, you know, everybody would be on the same page of ideas, because a lot of good ideas were in there, so.
I do know that the neighborhoods I visited recently, they wanted some activity in their area, and they talked about a combination of things, a retail, a rest, you know, whether it's purchasing something or a restaurant, they really, not that they wouldn't be acceptable some of the other things that we've been offered, but there's a number of buildings there, so it could be a great combination, and maybe what we want to think about is try to determine that combination that will vitalize some economic development there, give the neighbors someplace to go on Saturday or Sunday, and then have, have other nonprofits, be nonprofits that really could help that neighborhood, you know, the things that they need. And I think most of you have been on the council long enough to know, and so do you, Christina, their needs in that neighborhood. And so, if it's their needs, we do have some other sections around in that area that have the same needs. So, I don't know if we can do any more at this meeting. I think, what do you suggest, Rorick? I really think we need to have a little bit more information and have an exec meeting on this, or a special meeting.
Madam Mayor, I think we have direction, and it would be to explore the potential sale, and in our system, we can follow a public process. It's not a hard auction, so we can evaluate potential buyers and their potential use, and certainly, the market value is a driver in this, and that's something we can get together and get back to in the future.
Councilman, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to do that to you. Go ahead.
That's all right. Can we get an appraisal on this property? Because we don't even know what we're talking about. Someone's offered 140,000 for a corner. We don't know what it's worth.
We have some internal estimates. We can certainly get an appraisal, and if we're going to get on the sale route, that's probably what we need to do.
We need to know if it's even worth doing that, or splitting it, or what. I mean, we can't make a decision without knowing that, I wouldn't think.
So, we'd probably recommend a full, you know, request for proposals on a purchase, outlining this, the offer, and what their potential use is, and bring that back, along with an appraisal for evaluation.
Well, in our original discussion, we did discuss that, selling or renting, so that isn't anything new, so I don't think we're off on that discussion tonight, so. Councilman Laura Towne?
And I know in our original discussion, we also discussed rehab, what it would take to get these properties up to snuff. Would we be selling them as is? I mean, I think that's something else we want to consider, if we're going to put money in, and then the sale price, if that can be factored into, I guess, the appraisal, an as-is sale, as opposed to a re-rehab before we sell, you know, you kind of had some basic numbers there, but if we're going to actually do an appraisal, can we get work those, those two ways in?
We can. I guess the only, the tricky part of that is, how do you want us to advertise the purchase? And do you want us to do that work upfront and come back to council and get some direction on how to market, or do a little work, and then staff?
Yeah, I'd like to know more information first, and that may be like, as Councilmember Stiff said, in an executive session, for us to figure that out, because that's our bottom line, because basically, if we're going to sell it for X amount, with that, when we actually get an appraisal, and it's going to cost us, you know, up to, you know, we're going to make $10,000 profit, that may not be the way to go when we actually get the hard numbers. So, I kind of like see some hard numbers here.
I think it makes sense. We could go get the appraisal and do those, and get those rehab estimates, bring them back and get direction.
I think we'd be more comfortable. Councilman Stiff?
Is it possible to get the appraisal number for the cost of the land, assuming that they're going to demolish the buildings as well? Because that was something that we talked about, was maybe turning that into parking lot. Well, a parking lot potential areas obviously has a different appraisal value than buildings that are in need of being raised. So, I think we want to make sure we explore all those options, so we don't come back for a third, or fourth, or fifth work session.
Okay. Yeah, I think it was referenced in the initial work session about demolishing and then marketing the property, so we can factor that into an appraisal as well.
Okay.
And bring those options back to council.
Any other questions, just? Councilman Hampton?
Probably a little preemptive. Is there a timeline on when we would see something like that?
As far as the appraisal?
Just the executive, get to the executive session, make a decision, and, because I know some people were more interested than others to move quicker to buy it, or to do whatever they wanted to with it, so I'm just curious.
The tricky part's the holidays.
Yeah.
So, I think probably 45 days is going to be about right, right end of January.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other questions on this? So, we're agreed that this will have to be brought back to us with the information that we asked for, and possibly a special meeting, so we can have some discussion on it. Okay? All right. So that we will devote So that we will devote necessary time tonight to the strategic plan and still address the regular meeting. We're going to take a short recess. And we're going to come back for the 6:00 PM meeting, or earlier. And we will then listen to the presentation on the strategic plan after the regular meeting. Okay? So I just wanted to let you know that, all right? So I'm going to, there's a reason for this, and please cooperate on this. We are going to recess this meeting, and we're going to give staff a few moments to...
Do you want to set the time for us to come back then, since it...
Six, is that what you want?
Actually, six, we don't need until six. If you want to give us about 10 minutes or so to just redo the tables.
That's okay, we need 10 minutes before we begin. But we're going to move up to the, the dais and move everything up.
Oh, okay.
Yes?
Yeah, and Madam Mayor, I would point out that we do have a couple of outside entities expecting to start at six, so we...
Well, I did mention that to the, okay. So I was right on that. So, so we need to get that information straight because what happens is, is that before, we do have to begin at six. And I was told, well, we don't have a public meeting, so we don't have to begin at six. So we need to get that information correct and furnish me with that correct information. I appreciate it, okay? So we're going to adjourn, recess this meeting and the time we're going to be having staff... All right, we're going to begin the work session once again. So we're at 3.2. And the city council will receive an overview of the draft city strategic plan through 2021, reflecting the focus area definitions and goals developed during the October 2017 strategic planning retreat and refined with the input from the city staff. Following the review, the staff recommends council establish a consensus regarding any final changes to the plan prior to a potential adoption during an upcoming regular meeting. Pam Weir, Assistant to the City Manager, will present. Pam?
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity to present your draft strategic plan to you tonight. This plan will span through the fiscal year of 2021, if you can believe that. And most of the information presented tonight has come directly from the October strategic planning retreat with some staff validation and refinement since then. And I believe you've all had a copy of this for a couple of weeks. And so I'm hoping to move through and really hone in on issues that you want to raise here tonight. So while ideally, we'd love to move forward with a plan after tonight, we also understand if issues arise and there's need for more explanation. Staff is totally comfortable being flexible, moving forward. So I just want to preface with that, we're okay with that if you need more time to deliberate. So after the overview that I give of the strategic plan, I want to walk through the three main components of the plan's structure and hopefully generate consensus on each of those three parts. I will plan to pause after I present each component so that we can address each one as it happens. And then I'll wrap up with our plan for next steps to implement the strategic plan. So briefly, where we stand today, the last formal strategic plan was adopted in 2014. And it was to span the fiscal years 2015 to 2017. And so what that means is that this time, we do not have, we essentially are operating off of an expired strategic plan. There have been progress updates over the past two years, presentations to council, but we have not adopted a new plan. So it, excuse me, that's it. All right, so before we dive into the plan contents, I just want to give an overview of the context of the strategic plan just to reiterate sort of the importance of driving this forward and developing a new plan. So within our, our performance management program, the strategic plan is part of a larger system that ranges all the way from our city's mission all the way to our frontline operations. And so without a strategic plan, that system struggles to function in its, its cycle. So the cycle is this plan implement, review, and then improve stage. And the strategic plan is one of the few documents in that planning stage that sets priorities for the entire city across the full organization. And so there are a few reasons why it's very important that the city have an up-to-date strategic plan. Number one, it's one of the best communication tools that we can have between mayor and council, this organization and its staff, and the citizens because it expresses what the highest priorities of the city are. It also helps us determine how to allocate our resources. So as we go through the budget process and think about supplementals and things to bring forward, we look to the strategic plan to help instruct us on where your priorities fall and what funding is most important. If staff and council don't have a mutual understanding of the city's strategy, then we do miss out on the ability to make better decisions about what to invest our time and money in. And instead, we sort of address things one at a time. While the general plan lays out the 10-year overarching vision, the strategic plan informs priorities in a three-year or less timeframe. And so it more closely relates to our day-to-day and year-by-year operations. But it still provides the flexibility so that our subject matter experts who work for the city can adjust their programs and services to meet the outcomes that the goals prescribe. Upon passage of the strategic plan, departments will then, as you see, move into that implementation stage. So they will take your goals and translate them into programs and services that will further those outcomes. And then finally, twice per year, city departments will capture their progress toward the goals, and a report will be shared by council. And that's the time when you'll really hear about the specific activities and things that are going on that tie to the plan. So the, the scope of our strategic plan update really focused in on the goals. So we have our city vision, and we have our focus areas established. At the time at which we were working on this update, there was not a strong push to revisit the vision or the focus areas. And so we assumed those to remain constant. If council chose in the future, we could always revisit and update either the focus, the number of focus areas or the scope of the vision and mission. So now I'd like to walk through the proposed plan for fiscal year 2021. And this is where I will pause, kind of at the end of each section because my hope is to gain an understanding of how far the consensus reaches as we go through the plan. So there are a few key changes that went into the thought of the fiscal year 2021 update. And over the past couple of years, as you know, I've been in front of you a few times as we've kind of incrementally gotten closer to closer to a document that works well for you all and the organization. One of the big ones was it was important to improve the document, to remove a lot of jargon, to remove the level of detail of action and activity updates. That putting those directly into the plan really bogged down what the overarching city's strategy was. And so we found an alternate tool to report out on those specific activities. We added a purpose statement. So at the October strategic planning retreat, the entire group of mayor and council and department directors worked together on defining a purpose statement that sort of tied the plan together. We also updated our focus area definitions and established 14 new goals. And so I also want to emphasize now that this strategic plan is a breathing document. So we have a three-year outlook, but we will do annual updates. And so you'll get your twice yearly status update on our progress toward the goal. And if at any time, once a year, we need to shift a goal focus, take one out, add one in, that's very possible. And so, you know, if it's not, you know, you're worried about it not being 100% today, understand that, again, next fall, you'll have another opportunity to address the strategic plan. But it's important to note that as it stands now, we don't have an active strategic plan. So the first section I would like to go over, and this, a great deal of time was spent on this during the October retreat. And I'm essentially just looking for a nod that this still stands and resonates with council as the purpose. And then we'll move on to the focus areas and the goals. So the purpose statement, it was referred to as a rose during the strategic planning retreat, just to jog your memory. We chose to take out the consultant-specific language in preparing your plan because we want to be more citizen-friendly. But this is the statement about why we work with unified leadership, a talented workforce, and an involved citizenry. Goodyear is on the leading edge of tremendous growth and quality development opportunities. By eliminating all barriers and staying flexible, we will take calculated risks to maximize the community's potential. And we deliver services to meet the needs of our city so that Goodyear continues to be a thriving, sustainable community for all. And so, mayor, if I may, I'd like to pause here and sort of get the nod or comments on this statement before I move on.
Okay, I'd like each of you to look at me and to give me kind of just a look, please. Or you have, I'm going to start now. Do you have a question? All right. You have one?
Not a question, just the last sentence. I like it. The only thing I'm wondering about is we do our customer satisfaction survey every year to see if there's services at need that are evolving or things that citizens may not want but want to enhance on others. Is that covered? Do you feel strong enough within that, that statement there that it's evolving and could be changing based on the positions of our citizenry on what they want or not want? Because it does says deliver services to meet the needs, so maybe that is all encompassing. But I would, I do want to make sure that, that somehow that's understood within that sentence because that's why, that's why we do the survey, is to make sure that we are delivering the services they want and at the level that they want them.
I guess my question is, when you ask that, is that, is that, is there someplace else that that would be put in? Because a purpose statement would not, at least my understanding, would not be so defined such as that. It would be deliver services. So is there somewhere else?
Yeah, if I may, mayor and council member Pozzillo. So this, keep in mind, you know, I referred to it as a system. And so that, that context of how our system works is presented as a part of the introduction of the strategic plan. And so these things do refer to each other and work together.
So that will expand somewhere else? Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
I'm looking at you, both of you. Down here. Yeah, Joanne, go ahead.
Just for memory's sake, so you said the purpose statement, that was our rose. Were these the exact, you didn't say these were the exact words, correct? Was this the exact...
This is verbatim. This has not changed. Not one word has changed, yes.
There you go. All right, that's it.
How about down there? All right, we're on. Go.
I love my awkward water moment.
Yes.
I saw that before. So then, then we moved on to focus area definitions. And I will preface again, in the event that we start careening into wordsmithing and so on, I will, I'm happy to take general direction and come back again. I don't think any of us want to sit here and wordsmith tonight. So we'll, we'll try to move that along. But I welcome general concepts. So I'm going to read you all four, and then we'll talk about all four. So these focus areas have been in place since about 2011, I believe. And the definitions, in, through practice over the last few years, the definitions had become a little bit convoluted as to, okay, when I do something, is it fitting into quality of life? Or does it fit into economic vitality? So we did an exercise during the October retreat to sort of put fresh eyes on these focus area definitions. So we have fiscal and resource management. Maintaining a long-term view, we allocate and use our resources in an efficient and effective manner. This effort is aligned across the organization with an emphasis on transparency. Then we have economic vitality. We will continue to ensure the prosperity of our community by increasing the growth of our economy through diversity, business investment, quality job creation, education, and tourism. Then we have...
Let me look down here. This side?
Are these our words?
These are exactly the words from the retreat, correct?
You have a question? All right. Bill, go ahead.
Okay. Before I begin, I had a great meeting with Dan and Pam last week. Talked about the whole strategic focus concept and where they're at, and, and how these focus area definitions are different than the previous focus area definitions that we had. And Pam and I did a little dance about, about council direction versus information. And we had this whole little great thing. And I was very appreciative of, of the whole, the whole experience. But one of the, one of the things that were, that were... So anything I'm going to say is not a surprise. We can say that. So the, before we go through the, we're going to go through these focus area definitions, the one thing that is missing from us is the guiding principle process. This whole concept of strategic focus is a four-stool system. It's about purpose, which we've identified in the, in the previous slide, which we all said we've got our purpose. We need to talk about function, which is the needs of the community, the process, which is then the staff's capacity to be able to get it done. And then the final piece is the structure, and that's how will it be done? Not how will the individual projects be done, but how will these focus areas be administered? And that's the part that we're missing. Guiding principles are the structure. So we can go down a long road about this, but if we leave that part off, we leave the guiding principle piece off, we're, we're not really doing what we intended to do. And we would have wasted two afternoons and a whole bunch of other time. So having said that, the, there's a couple of things in here, and, and it's not a wordsmithing issue, but that were in previous definitions that are missing from here, and it's pretty evident. For example, the fiscal and resource management, we say nothing in here about managing our fiscal and human resources. We just talk about everybody as, everything as a resource. And we spend a lot of time and effort and money, quite frankly, about our human resource piece, and we don't talk about it as a focus. And I think, I think we should. We also talk in the previous definition about business practices. Will be efficient, business-friendly, and ensure exceptional customer service. And again, in our fiscal resource, we don't, we don't talk about that. And if you recall during the retreat, when these were being, you know, I'm going to say thrown up against the wall, and what is everybody, we were functioning at such a high rate of speed to get through because we were rushing toward the, toward the end, that we didn't really come back and revisit those. So I'm just kind of throwing those out there for, for consideration. That's under the fiscal and resource management. Under economic vitality...
Can I stop you there?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So did, did you, the two of you look at this, and you came up with some other words that put this in, or not? Or were you still on different sides of the pond?
Oh, no. No, we were not on different sides of the pond. It was a, the dance that we were doing is the, how much direction can a council member give in a, in a, in a small meeting like that without it being council member giving direction? So Pam was very gracious and said, look, you can bring them up. We can talk about it on Monday night. And if the council says, yeah, that's something we can do, then the staff will go back and rewrite. Is that, did I paraphrase that correctly?
Yep, that's correct. I didn't...
So let's take this slow for all of us to grasp here. So on that fiscal resource management, give me an example how you would put it in, into what we see? Or would we totally rewrite the whole thing?
No, I think you can add it in here and just add a, add a sentence or something that talks about our policies and practices that will effectively manage our fiscal and human resources. That's one. And then a second one is we talk about our business practices, which will be efficient, business-friendly, and ensure exceptional customer service. I think those are the things that we, we say, we've said to the development continuum, man, cut the timeline down. We've, we've done, but nowhere in our focus area do we say that that's what we want to do. So...[1762.01]
Well, right now, let me hear from the others so we can-
Yeah.
Brandon?
I like those. I was also going to add into the economic, or in the fiscal resource management, sorry. The fiscal resource management with the, something with lean or the process improvement, which I think would also hit with the continuum of the planning, but just the bigger picture of, we're going to start to make lean, lean process improvement, our processes as a whole to keep streamlining and make sure all our processes are as efficient as possible.
So I have this side. How are you feeling about it? Sherri?
Pam, I do want to thank you for all your hard work, because I know it's like chasing cats to get all this together. But when I was reading, and I've got more notes, I guess more down with the draft goals is where, but-
Well, let's just keep going down from one to the other.
But what, how I'm kind of tying that in is like, I felt when I was reading down to that, that I wasn't getting that tie-in with what was here to where the goals were. I felt like there was something missing, and maybe that's the piece I'm missing. I just felt like it wasn't, I was missing a step. And maybe that's the step. I don't write these, so I don't know, but I did feel like I was missing something in between.
Okay. Joanne?
I guess I'm, I'm just more listening to everybody. I'm a little concerned about we're going to be completely redoing it all over again. This was the shot that staff brought back from the retreat of everything you put together. And now I know we need to talk about, well, this is missing, that's missing, and so, you know, I've, and I'm not saying they don't, I'm not saying that they shouldn't be in there because I agree. When we look at some of the old focus areas that we had, and some of those key things are missing, they need to be back in there, you know? And I, so Councilmember Stiff and the two of you, you've already hit upon a couple of them. I'm just wondering how this is going to work all in the end again. It's like we're going to have to formulate it again, so just listening.
So are you thinking, will it be too long or too much under it?
Well, that's what I'm wondering. I mean, I know we're trying to keep them certain short, but-
Does that lose the impact, or does it make it more impact because we impactful?
But if it's losing major pieces that we should have, then, you know, we just have to keep working at it.
That's great. Wally? I'm going down the way.
Well, I really agree with the human aspect and the business aspect because that has been our mantra, is that we're friendly to the development community, we're cutting how we do business, we're making it quicker and faster and easier for them. And I just think it really needs to be right there. I mean, just adding two sentences won't, you know, that's all.
All right. Joe?
I'll go along with the majority, but to me, resources are both human and money. So I had no problem reading it to incorporate both of them because your resources are the people and the money. The second part is, I would be a little careful about putting a process in there like lean, and here's the reason why. The goal is not just to streamline a process, it's to streamline them so that they're efficient and effective. We can cut a lot of things, and then down the road go, what did we do that for? We just made it worse. All right? So again, we've got to be careful on how we define it. That's why I like efficient, effective delivery, and maybe some of the things that Bill put in work. But I don't want to put in there a process that says we're cutting just to make things streamlined, because you can streamline things, and they actually create more problems than before you started. So it's got to be a reason why you're doing it to make it more efficient, more effective, so.
Okay, so now-
That's my two cents.
So now we're down back to Bill. So let's solve this one right now.
So I'm just suggesting that we allow Pam and the rest of the staff to work in managing the fiscal and human resources, and then to get to Brandon's concern, which Joe addresses, is the, is the sentence that is in our current or former, everyone say it, plan that says business practices will be efficient, business-friendly, and ensure exceptional customer service. We address effectiveness, we address customer service, we address our business-friendly component, and we say that that is a focus area that we have as a city. And we just add those sentence and a half, and this is a good definition.
You got that?
Yes, and just to confirm, so I don't accidentally surprise you, were you hoping that both of those things were in fiscal and resource management, or was one in? Okay, they're both up there. Okay, perfect. I'm good.
So I'll go to economic vitality next.
So let's, I'll do that. Let me run the meeting just a little bit. I have to watch you. Okay, so now we're on economic vitality.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Excuse me for, if we do start to look at the resources, and we said human and fiscal, I'd encourage you to also put physical in there because part of the concept was our water resources, et cetera. So if you add the word physical, I think that would get at what we are trying to drive here.
Thank you, that's absolutely so. Okay? All right, so now where?
Economic vitality.
Let's go ahead and move on to economic vitality.
Economic vitality? All right. I'm going to start down here a minute, and then I'm going to come back to you.
Lock your socks up.
Anything on economic vitality?
I just want to know how realistic the numbers are. I know that you've already run these by economic development. Is that correct?
Are you referring to the goals?
Yeah, the goals.
We will get to the goals momentarily.
Okay. Okay, I'm good with the higher level here, yes.
Okay.
Sherri?
I'm good. I think my problem is going to be the connecting to the first.
Okay. Joanne? Okay, Wally? You want him to speak for you?
Yes, please.
Okay, Joe?
Sorry, Joe.
Joe?
On economic vitality, I'll wait to listen to you quick because can you ensure the prosperity of our community by increasing the growth of our economic through diversity, business investment, quality of jobs, education, tourism? And I assume somewhere else down the road is a great place to work, play, raise family, right? So, because to me, that all deals with economic vitality. I mean, if you have a good, don't have a place where you want to be, where you can also raise your kids, you have, you know, the climate, et cetera, to me, that adds to it as well, so.
Is that economic vitality? I don't think that's economic vitality, Joe. That's my opinion. I don't think it is at all.
But again-
But thank you for the suggestion. Bill?
I think we can draw it forward. Okay, so the one thing in economic vitality that is in the current one that is not mentioned anywhere in this whole thing is transportation, mobility, and infrastructure. And that, we need, we have to address our ability for transportation somewhere in this plan theoretically. If we do not make transportation or mobility, et cetera, one of our focus areas, that is something that can easily slip through, through the cracks.
So which one would be?
Historically, transportation and infrastructure has fallen in economic vitality. There's also an argument to be made in quality of life, but I leave that to you. I'm completely comfortable keeping it in economic vitality if that's what the consensus of council desires.
Well, I- Where was it before?
Economic vitality.
It was under economic vitality.
I almost wish I had, I wish I had brought the old one in.
And I do have the old definitions for Elmo if we want to go there.
Oh, that'd be great, yes, please.
Do you want to go there now, Mayor?
Okay.
So Laney, can I get Elmo, please?
Thank you. Because I didn't bring my book there.
Yes. She could just do it.
Well, you need to call it out. So from, if I can just continue with that one suggestion while you guys are reading it, the concept again of strategic focus, it's based in academia, and a number of authors have talked about this. You want to speak to it, you don't just want to call it out in a parentheses.
I feel like this is a list, just like a grocery list.
You want to call it out in a sentence.
So if we can, I agree with that. And so if we can sign, put this together, and yet you get the same meaning out of it without, without this, because that's what it-
And I can absolutely take the direction to include, add a sentence relating to our investment in transportation and infrastructure.
Mobility.
Mobility, infrastructure.
Is that, is that, does everybody kind of feel that way? Any more to this before we go on with it?
The only other, the only other thing on the current, the one that you have, I hate to make you go back. Well, Laney, can you go back to the PowerPoint? The economic vitality, we talk about quality job creation, education, and tourism, but one of the things that we as a council have been talking about, and I'm surprised Councilmember Pizzillo didn't say anything, we make no reference in here of retail or entertainment. And that for us is a huge piece. So we're going to talk about job creation, we're going to talk about tourism, well then, holy smokes, we better get retail and entertainment in there.
Since it's a three-year plan, I agree.
And especially now that we're going to have a new economic development director, we want that person to know that that is very important to us, and it's a strategic initiative. So if you can add those words-
How do we put it? I'm just a little nervous about how we put that in there, and the fact that-
Well, it's in the goal.
Increasing the growth of our economy through diversity, business investment, quality job creation, education, retail, entertainment, and tourism. That's the diversity that we're talking about, and that's our growth of our economy.
Yeah, so we're just looking retail in that.
Retail and entertainment, retail, entertainment, and tourism.
Oh.
See, tourism is already there, just add retail.
Yeah, retail, comma, entertainment, and tourism, that's all.
All right?
Well, and that connects-
I said a quick question.
That connects, I guess that connects economic vitality with the recommended goals because you really do line out how we want the entertainment tax categories and stuff.
I just want to make sure again, it isn't like a grocery list, and so I'm getting that feeling again, but I don't know how to, I don't know how to solve it, okay?
Without saying industries?
Yeah, without, so that's, that's the part that it's, it's like, oh, I forgot to tell you this, now I'm going to tell you this, and this, and this. But I understand your, your feeling. Let me see what, Brandon, do you have any suggestions?
I was just curious. I know how we were focusing on key industries in our economy that we want, unless there's something in there we want to add about key, key businesses, if it's, was it the medical, aerospace things? I don't want to call those out, but if we highlight those, that's what we want to focus on. But that might be more of a strategy going forward, or?
Those are guiding principles that if we have them-
That's something I'm looking for as well, like you were talking about, like how do we go FCP?
So how do we do this without, I mean, so, so let's talk about that one. You talk about business investment, quality of job creation, so retail, all of that is job creation. Oh, I kept doing this, and I didn't know what you meant. I thought, well, I was a way back at you.
All right, I just thought I could be a pound here a little bit. I know that the old one did-
Can you speak up a little bit for me?
Sure, sure, sure. I know that the old definition did call out the different sectors, but I think that you might want to wait because the new focus on success plan, or whatever you decide to call it, will be in the middle of this, and you might change the industry. So I wouldn't call them out now. I'd wait.
I don't want to call them out. I was just saying, key industries, wherever we focus on in the future. Sorry.
It's all right, this is a conversation, too. You can speak up before the rest of us wants to recognize. I'll forgive you on that.
No, I agree on key industry.
I just want to call it key. Just key. I don't want to say, I don't want to say what those are, because later on, we will decide what those will be as a, as a city.
Right.
And it could change in the future.
Joe?
Yeah, he's right on how I missed it, but we even have adopted a-
Can you guys all speak up? I'm having a little bit of a problem tonight. Speak in your microphone. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know how I missed it, but the fact that we have a ordinance that actually incentivizes retail and entertainment to not have that on that as a focus, since that's what we've been pushing, that's what we have an ordinance for, just not to put those two in there, I think would be a mistake. Because we've even created and adopted an ordinance to focus in on that.
I'm sorry, create a what?
We created an ordinance to focus in on that, where we've given incentives for certain amount of square footage, certain things that they bring, because we realize the importance of having that from our tax base standpoint, so.
Michelle on Econ, if you want to say something, this is important, and anybody that's on staff that's on something that we have here, it's good to get feedback on this.
I'm sorry, this is the last time I'll jump up unless you ask me.
Don't be sorry.
But I think, I would agree with that retail and entertainment. The thing that I wasn't saying is, I know last time you did internet fulfillment, you did, actually called out the different, obviously retail and entertainment is going to remain a focus. I just wouldn't call out aerospace because you don't know if that's what you're going to put in your new plan. That's all I meant.
Yeah, I guess because entertainment is going to be lasting. I mean, we're not going to give that one up, so. Wally?
Well, we did, in our survey to the citizens, they talked about how much they wanted retail, so we have to have that in. And he also said they wanted entertainment. So we need to let them know we got their message, I think.
I hear a clear consensus about adding retail and entertainment.
I have a-
Joanne?
Question of the process of this. So three years from now, the council of the time is going to be talking about redoing the strategic plan again. So my question is, these focus area definitions, will those be changing every time we change the strategic plan? Or is it only going to be the goals that go underneath these definitions? Do you know what I'm saying?
Generally, it would just be the goals. So in the past cities where I've managed strategic plans, your focus areas and your kind of definitions or guiding principles, those are pretty everlasting. The reason we address them in the retreat is over time, and throughout council meetings and things like that, it was very clear that those definitions weren't quite serving us, and so we wanted to revisit those. But it had been a good six years since we had. So the idea is, these general overarching statements that say, this is where our attention is, and those goals really outline things like the industries or, you know, the specific things addressed in the citizen survey or that sort of.
So I guess to that, my feeling about it is that the goals do address the retail and the entertainment thoughts. I do completely believe that we're missing the statement of key industries, because those key industries could be changing every three years. Granted, though, tourism, entertainment, retail will probably be ongoing for a long time, so that could be, but I think you do need to say something about our key industries. Don't, you know, line them out, but key industries, and even, I don't know if you even want to take, well, tourism's with the, with baseball, so, but I do believe that's missing. But I don't want us to get caught up with trying to put so much into these focus definitions because the goals are going to follow up that are ever-changing. That's why I asked how this will be used in the future.
I could go with retail in there, if that's something that somebody, but-
You don't want to say entertainment?
Oh, entertainment.
Entertainment, retail, that's all I'm suggesting. I think business investment covers all the rest of the key industries, and then the-
You think?
Well, I do, but, there's a but and an asterisk. A guiding principle that calls out key industries could also be done that then lasts, lasts through time.
So do we need guiding principles? Do we need a focus area definitions, guiding principles, and then the goals? Is that what we're missing? Okay.
That's the part that Sherri was talking about.
Then maybe we don't need to be, yeah.
No, you do. You have to start here.
We need to be putting this all, these extra words in this.
You need to start here. Can I, can I use my analogy? The foundation thing? If you're familiar with how a house is built or a building is built, they do a footer in the ground.
Yes.
That's what your focus areas are. The, the foundation wall, the foundation, is the guiding principles. Those are the things that will hold the entire structure up. The goals that change are the building itself. You can change the walls, you can change the paint, you can change everything else about the building, but you very rarely ever change your footer or your foundation. So that's why those two, that's the analogy that I use, that that's why those are so important. So getting this right then allows us to write better guiding principles because we've identified where we want to be. But this becomes what you've said, what you say to your community and you say to your staff, these are the things that we want to focus on, and retail and entertainment are key. Business investment covers all the rest of the specific industry stuff.
So, so retail doesn't come under business investment?
I think we want to call it out for the very reason that Joe said. We got to.
Okay, then you're going to break down these specific actions for each one of those things you call out in here because they're important to us. So this is the high level.
So retail and entertainment, are you saying that?
Yeah, then you've got to have actions to go address each one of those things.
Okay. So I think you got retail and entertainment for the majority.
And then the infrastructure, like I said, as well.
Okay, a call out on that.
And the infrastructure, like you talked about in the beginning, too. Infrastructure and transportation and transit.
I'm sorry, because-
I was just wrapping it all up. That's what, that's what all he said. I was just wrapping it all up, that's what, that's what all he said.
When you wrap it up, don't move away from the microphone, wrap it up right here with clear words, okay?
So yeah, so just, just to consider, just to wrap up what he said, so he said retail, entertainment, transportation, infrastructure and.
Mobility.
Mobility.
In some way, you're going to add those in.
Yeah.
She's got it.
Everybody agreement on that one, okay, alright, let's go on.
I've got it, two down, two to go. Alright, so next we have sense of community and quality of life. Sense of community, we will continue to make Goodyear citizens feel connected through active communications and invested in our community by engaging in activities, places and events that give them a sense of pride. And then quality of life, we will continue to make Goodyear a place to live, work and play that promotes diverse, that promotes diverse activities and amenities in a safe and well-maintained environment.
You put the survey and the sense of community there, since Joe, what is that, how do you feel about that?
He didn't want to call it the survey.
No, no, I, the only thing I mentioned, and there's times where we adjust what we're delivering, and I don't know where that would go or whether it's necessary in there, because that, that survey, sometimes they may come back and say, I don't want this, but I want you to enhance this, I don't know if that's necessary to put that in there, but my point is, is that gives you some flexibility based when the surveys come in on how you may address either the sense of community or the quality of life.
That could be a goal.
Whether you're meeting, meeting that goal.
Guiding, that's part of the guiding principles that we're going to go by, is that survey.
Because that's, that's what we use that survey for, that is a guiding principle.
It's not a definition though.
So I need some more feedback on that.
Can we see the other ones?
Can you put that back?
Yeah.
Elmo, the Elmo ones?
Yes.
Lanny, can we have Elmo please?
Yeah, okay, thank you. Sounds like an ad for housing community. That is, we did get wordy, didn't we?
How much do we want to get? I just wonder if we want more.
I think that could have more, I think that could have more power to it. Well.
Just wondering if we want our purpose.
Yes, go ahead, Molly.
I like.
More vision.
The old sense of community, even though the sentence is long, because it really encompasses everything that we're trying to do as a city for the community.
Let's hear from the other.
And the, oh, and the new one that we're proposing really doesn't say that.
The, alright, let's, let's comment to what Molly's suggestion is, so let me start down here, Joanne?
I think that I, I like in the new one, I like the sense of pride, because that sense of pride wasn't in the, I like that. I think that our citizens want to feel that sense of pride, and I think we all believe in that. I think the one thing that was missing for me is it just says places, and I don't know, and in the old definite, old definition and things that we continually talk about are the gathering places, so I think gathering is missing, at least in that. I know you have customer service and things like that, which is, which is good, that, that part's good, but I do like the new one with the sense of pride.
Comments on that, Brandon?
Yeah, I, I, I don't mind that, I just didn't also maybe add, maybe volunteering into that as well, volunteering, that engaging activities and volunteering in places and events, and I also want to go back to the beginning, I think we said as a community we wanted to be one of the top places for arts. I don't know if that needs to be in there at all as well, I'm trying to think in the beginning of the presentation, a hub of arts and culture in the West Valley, I don't know if that needs to go down into one of those topics as well. If we're going to go big, I just want to make sure it's captured. I don't know.
Opportunities for engagement is under quality of life, but your arts and culture part is, it's, it's not in, it's, yeah.
It should be under quality of life.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, wherever, wherever it goes, I just don't want to, if, if we want to be the hub, we should probably put it in our, in one of those two areas.
Engagement.
If we're going to go big, I just want to make sure it doesn't get lost.
Comments?
Where are you reading the hub of?
That was in page slide seven.
It's in our vision statement.
Our vision statement, we put some big things in there, we're going to be the destination, regional shopping, workforce needs.
Got it.
So.
Yes, I'm sorry, Bill, I was reading.
That, that's okay, so, in the proposed focus area, we are basically saying, Goodyear citizens are going to feel connected because we're going to actively communicate with them, and they're going to feel invested in our community because they're going to engage in activities, places and events that give them a sense of pride. That's the only thing that we're doing to bring them a sense of community, is we're going to communicate with them and we're going to give them a place.
So truly just communication.
So, that was my concern, was, I don't know what the word active communication is.
Oh, but it scares me.
Yeah, it scares me too, because it's kind of vague. So I, I think there may be an opportunity to reword this, combining both of these together in a creative way that I think staff can, can, can pull forward. You know, I, I have a, I have one that we've, that we've used, or that a community that we're working with has used. The city will update, support and provide policies, programs and gathering, gathering places and events that sustain our vibrant, unique and authentic community. Our community can come together to celebrate and preserve its culture and history while enhancing the quality of life. Sustainable relationships with the community will be cultivated through citizen engagement, outstanding customer service and clear accessible communication. Now, I'm not saying that that's the best one, but that's.
A little wordy.
Well, they all are, that's kind of the point, is they're the, this is what you're focusing on, but I think somewhere in between is where, is the difference between this one and the one, the one that we're seeing right now and the proposed one.
Yeah, I like some of the concepts from that.
Like what?
I like, I like some of the concepts from, from that one you just, you just mentioned.
And I'd like to add, I agree with Joanne, add in the gathering places again, because I think that's what we always say that we want.
I'm going to talk in the microphone tonight, because I'm.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've lost a hearing aid.
The, the gathering places, I think that's a, an important one, because that's what we always talk about, and also learning and recreation. I don't think recreation itself is there, and since we're going to be spending so much money and effort and time for a recreation campus, that probably that word should be up in there, because that's what we're looking for.
Mayor, if I may? Mayor Lord, if I may?
Yes.
So what I'm hearing, with your permission, is that essentially we're looking for a more citizen-friendly version of the old sense of community definition that incorporates a sense of pride.
And I like.
Is that more or less?
I don't know, give your words, just give us some help on some of the words.
Because we're missing learning, recreation, gathering places, those are present in the old ones. The proposed has that sense of pride incorporated, and then I've heard comments that kind of the way that past one is worded is a little hard to digest, so if staff takes that and massages it a little bit, I think we might accomplish what everyone's trying to get to.
Okay, they're nodding their head.
Okay, can we have the presentation back, thank you. And then finally, quality of life, so we will continue to make Goodyear a place to live, work and play that promotes diverse activities and amenities in a safe, well-maintained environment.
So, what was last, the last one, please?
I'm sorry, what?
Can she put the old?
We have Elmo again?
It says engaged, healthy lifestyle, we don't have a healthy lifestyle.
We don't, have you seen us?
Sorry, what'd she say? Oh, you don't want to hear that.
You don't want to.
I just said, I just said that I didn't see in the proposal anything about an engaged, healthy, active lifestyle, and Bill said, do I look like I have a healthy lifestyle, I'm sorry. Is he asking for an answer? Oh, I don't know.
It's rhetorical.
I hope it was rhetorical.
I think we're just tired, but I, especially, I just think you need to.
Speak up, I can't hear you, please.
I think, I think you need to add something else to the quality of life proposal that you have on the table right now, please Pam.
I.
We'll continue to make Goodyear a place to live, work and play that promotes diverse activities, amenities in a safe and well-maintained. Yeah, I'm not going to let him, go ahead, Joe.
I like it just the way it is, that's just my own two cents worth.
It's missing healthy, and the fact that we have the wellness park coming, we need healthy lifestyles added in here.
I think we need health in there.
Yes, Joe, we want you healthy.
Promoting good health, I think we have to have something.
Yeah, we do, no, we do.
If we're, if we're going to.
That's a simple, probably easy one to put in Pam, thank you.
And then I don't know if we need to address the arts or not, if that's something we need to put in there.
The what?
The, the arts, if we're going to be the hub, since that's what we talked about before.
And you asked for the arts before to get in here, so.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just reiterating what was in the front, I don't want to lose it.
This place doesn't belong, quality of life for some community.
I don't know, I mean, if we're going to go, reach for that, then I'm just thinking we should have it somewhere in there, so. If we're not going to reach, if we're not going to reach for that, then let's don't put it in there.
We can incorporate arts.
We're going to say hub of art, I, I love the idea, but I don't want to put something out there that we're not going to be able to deliver.
I, I.
I don't want to promise anything to the public that thinks we're going to go do all of this stuff, if we cannot do it.
That's back to the goals, I, I think we keep, we keep trying to put all this stuff in a definition, rather than in a guiding principle.
Some of ours have gotten wordy, and, and that's why I say we're kind of loaded up, and do we really need that? Do we have to actually be so specific with people, you know, when you talk about certain qualities or certain things, so I don't, I don't know.
This is the high level, this is the laser, this is the focus of how you're going to do it, then from there you can branch out from each, each item within there. Each word has to have a purpose, and then you, then you'll build upon it.
I think if we keep arts and we don't go into specific arts, I think that's high level. If you start saying museums, sculpture, whatever, then you're going to.
No, no.
I think we say arts.
Yeah, exactly.
Place the word arts.
It could be the hub of Indian art or whatever.
Do you have something else, did I place?
Arts and health is what I'm hearing.
Okay. Anything anybody's unhappy about, or, okay, where are we?
So I'm happy to move on to the goals, and I will just note, it sounds like this concept of guiding principles is appealing to council. My recommendation would be not try to jam it into this version, sort of with, with the progress that we have made, but I would recommend we look at that as the next update to the plan, and we can work together on refining those. And well, if we want to delay and do a work session and kind of go through guiding principles before we pass the plan, I'm open to that.
As long as you put that on the list, that we're, that we want to work the word arts in, if you can't figure it out.
Yes, I got the arts and healthy lifestyle, yes.
Alright, so was there something, yes, go ahead.
No, I, yeah, okay, so, this, Councilmember Laura Tano says she has a hard time going from focus areas to goals, and something's missing. We've talked a number of, we've got these guiding principle pieces to hold these up, for us to skip that part is.
Skip what, skip what part?
The skip not doing guiding principles for each of the focus areas, I think is a gigantic mistake.
To do tonight?
No, I don't think we're going to do it tonight, I think the staff has the capacity to do it, to bring it back. So what I'd like to suggest is that staff fix these focus areas that we've talked about tonight, draft some guiding principles under each one of the focus areas.
That match, that go with it.
Right, that go with that, bring that back to us in the net, in another work session, and then look at the, and then in the meantime, our homework would be to look at the goals, are we okay with the goals, not okay with the goals, and then send those into the staff so that they can start to look at what we've got, because I know if any of you are, are like I am, there's things that are missing that I think should be added, and there's things that are in there that I, that I don't understand, we could be here for a week. But if we provide that information to the staff and let them work on it while they're working on the guiding principles, we'll get this thing done and through so that we have a decent document in which to move forward when a new manager shows up, et cetera.
Well, I do think what happens when we are up here and have, I say assignment, we have to create this, you get home and then you reread it and you start thinking about it, it's like I come back into staff all the time, change my mind all the time, because I go home and I, I've said something or made a decision, and I, I'm thinking about it, and then I think, oh, that's not quite what I want, but I think that's, I think we're going to have a little bit of that, maybe, maybe by giving us the assignment. First of all, we really want to help you translate what we're, what we're feeling and wanting to see that's workable, so. Yes, Sherry?
I, I think that would help me if we got those guiding principles to get to the next step, because that's why, I, I don't know what is specific missing, but I think that from talking that is where I'm losing something. And I don't, I would love to go back and look at the goals, but I, I know there's lots of changes in the goals. How did you determine, not without going specific goal, but how did you determine what changes? Because there's a lot of ones that are pretty drastically changed from what we talked about.
So what staff did once we took the goal, and I, actually, can I have the presentation back? This slide will just help me, so, following the planning retreat, we had draft goals, 14 of them from council, and as a leadership team, all of the department directors and executive management, we got together and we looked at the list of goals, and any goal that we looked at that we said, we don't actually have a measurement for that, or we don't know what that means, we put small groups together on each goal, and we met and said, okay, what can we do to embody the spirit of that goal and to get at the ultimate outcome, but it's something that we can actually come back to and say, we were successful at completing this, and here's our proof, because without that common understanding, then we pass a plan and six months later, no one's really kind of sure what the scope of it was. So, we really use that SMART goal framework, and we said, for example, you know, increase retail outreach, where we said, that is a workload indicator and we can make all the phone calls we want, but if what council really wants to see is additional retail in the community, then we need to measure that by the number of retail establishments, for example. So I know you don't want to get into the specifics, and it sounds like we're heading in a direction where we're going to add a component and, and come back, and that's.
But I think that is, we talked about the last time we got together, exactly the SMART, and I think you said, Bill, we have nothing to measure this by, we don't have this, so, so I really, when I read this, I really liked that, so I guess.
Oh, I guess my question was, I mean, there's just changes on the amounts with the dates, and I'm not sure where they all came from, like instead of 30%, it might say 20% instead of 2018.
Right, and that, so that came through this validation process, so for example, there was one that at the retreat, and to be fair, at the retreat, we were setting, we were setting goals without having long conversations about the data backing up. So there was one goal that said we're going to increase something by 25%, well, our current measure is 90%, so we can't increase it by 25%. So there are examples like that, and, you know, we have the, the backup detail for all of those decisions when we get to the point where we want it to be.
The other thing is, when you do percentages and we're transparent, so the customer, the citizen looks at that and says, wow, hey, where is that, you're not even close to that, and that makes me nervous, makes me terribly nervous. And we try 100% on everything, but we don't always accomplish what we want, but I hate to see a figure in there, go ahead.
I, I just have a question too, so, the guiding principles, is that going to allow us to, I mean, I guess map our destiny out? So if for some reason we want to be the smart city of the future, and then how we're going to get there, we're going to go do this, this, this and this to execute that mission, which then feeds up to our, our specific goals of being a, I forgot to go back to the actual things, but I'm just curious, is there be a time when we'll, we'll be able to say, oh, we want now to focus on these different industries, or we want for economic development, for example, or whatever our, whatever we want to be, whatever Goodyear wants to be like in the next 20 years, just how are we going to get there, and what can we do today to set it up, set us up for success to get there in 20 years? So, I'm just curious if we need, we want to have that kind of conversation eventually, or if that's part of this conversation? I would imagine it should be, but I just don't know.
Well, it's, it's hard to determine exactly how you're going to be in 20 years, and I just use the housing, I just use the housing industry as an example of where we, where we've come from, and that brings, that brings flexibility, and so I, I don't know how, this is, you know, this is not my thing, so.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I understand being flexible and every three years, but I'm just trying to think of other, other, other places, they look, they look to the, look to the future, and I mean, things, things might change in the future, but if you lay it out now to set us up for that success going forward, I just want to make sure that we're, that we're doing that, that we're not looking at short-term goals. But if, if we, if there is something, where, somewhere where Goodyear wants to be in the next 10, 20 years, we can set us, set ourselves up for that, and I just want to make sure that we're talking about it.
Alright, I'm going to turn it over here.
It might, I just don't know how specific it is, if, for example, like Sherry was talking about, if we want to be a smart city, maybe, I don't know if we've talked about that, and how, how would we get there? Because I'm sure there's a lot of, it's not going to be three years that we're going to be a smart city.
Right.
So, just as an example, I don't know if we want to be a smart city, when are my resources towards that, I'm not sure. Just, just an example of, I don't want to lose, lose whatever that could be as a council that we want to go forward with.
Well, to be a smart city, there's an awful lot involved in that.
Yeah, it's not going to happen in three years.
We need to look at.
As an example.
As an example, that's just an example, I don't know if we want to be that or not, because a lot of money and infrastructure.
They always said we want to be a sustainable city too, I mean, there are things that.
And what does that look, yeah, what does that look like, how do we get there? So, if we're going to be arts, hu- hub of arts, maybe there's a, an art. So, if we're gonna be arts, hu- hub of arts, maybe there's a, an art, art building. At some point, we need to fund and build for a, I don't know, whatever that looks like, so, I don't know.
I, somehow, we, I think that's a little specific. I think that's not quite where we're supposed to be. I'll turn the conversation to the side of the table.
Pam, do you want to, I'm happy to do it, talk about the difference between a visioning document and a strategic action plan?
So I...
Because I think that's what...
What I was going to share was really that, so we have this sort of ecosystem, as I mentioned, of our performance management capabilities. And if you look at other cities, and the, so you have your general plan, you have your strategic plan. We have master plans in each individual department. So if there's a specific issue, we have a long-term look at, you know, where our parks need to go to accommodate growth, things like that. And then you have cities that have future focused, like we want to be a waste zero city 50 years from now. And those are sort of particular, high-level, vision-driven initiatives with those plans and operations associated with them. And so that really, the, you know, the strategy really revolves around being the guidepost for those annual budget decisions and creates a measurement of what does success look like in this sort of medium, three-year term progress for the city.
So to take that one step farther, the, we don't have that visioning document that you're referring to, and that, that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, it is, it might not fit in here, but...
The smart city, the whatever, and so we rely, the next best thing we have is our, is our general plan that lays that out. And that whole visioning experiment, that is, it's a whole nother retreat, which I think we can do. But to get us through to where we are now with this, with strategic focus and then those guiding principles helps us to, to carry forward the things that are important now. And the, the strategic, or the focus areas really will never change. We will always want a quality of life. We will always want a ma, I mean, those are the things that will always happen. So, again, I, I think based on where we're at with the changes, et cetera, I'm hoping that somebody will agree that, come back with, with guiding principles. And then let's, Mayor, to your point, the, I'm only asking that we be able to submit our, our comments on the goals, what's missing, and not anything else. Let the staff do the, let the staff do that work. And if that works for Pam, then she hears from us on goals. They can continue to work on this thing in parallel tracks.
I, I have one other request, okay? Because it's been mentioned, a smart city. I would like us, just to give a brief paper on being a smart city, what it means, what it costs, and how long it takes to get it. Because you're using that term, and I looked into it one time. I came and I said, hey, hey, because I get these people talking to me out in the public all the time, you know, with the card and the smart city. So Brian, do you have a comment on this?
Yes, Mayor, and it's absolutely a great point. And it was brought up by this council. It will be in a future work session, so it was brought up to look at what a smart city is. We are now in the process of trying to find an, I'll say, an expert that knows more about this than us, can actually present to council during a work session so you get a better idea of what a smart city means, all the, the myriad activities and goals that are set up with that. So that has been a request to council. It will be in a future work session. I do not have a date for that, for you tonight, though.
It, it really, that is going to affect your budget tremendously. So, so we've got all these things we have planned, and so you have to, we have to look at this as total in portions of what we were doing. So I don't know if, when you go for a smart city, if you're on a schedule and you're gonna be smart quickly, or you're gonna spread it out.
And then that was, like I said, that was just an example. I was looking for a, a visioning, whatever we decide to do. It doesn't have to be that, we could be the zero waste or whatever.
I'm glad you brought it up, because I think it's a subject matter we need to talk about because technology, there could be, yeah.
Yeah, I, I just would like to see a, a work, like a work session, or retreat at some point for our vision.
Where are we?
Yeah.
Thanks, Mayor Lord. So I've heard from Councilmember Stip, this idea of, we've, we've mostly settled our focus area definitions with those few edits we discussed. There's an interest of council to include guiding, a guiding principles section under each focus area, which I'm very familiar with how those work and, and the types of things involved.
In your experience, this is something that is very helpful.
Absolutely. One of the cities I've worked for, we exactly followed that. You know, the biggest thing is, again, as staff, not wanting to surprise council. So we did a retreat where we talked about purpose, focus, and goals. I don't want to now show up with guiding principles without talking about it.
We don't want to put you through that.
So we welcome that, yeah, so we welcome that input. And then, so the, the, you know, first of all, if council agrees to doing that, then I think what would happen is I could send a communication to council, either through the manager memo or separate cover, with kind of a timeline of how we move this along, given that plan.
Is that good, everybody? I can't see you, Wally.
Sure.
Okay, all right, okay.
I can hear your head rattling.
Oh, sorry. Oh, I've got a mood tail.
Yeah. Okay, so where are we now?
So, to me, that, that is the direction, and, and there's no need to dive into the goals at this point. We'll send that again to you all through separate cover.
Okay, that's great, because I think we've done enough work tonight. Any other questions standing for anybody?
Thank you.
Oh, Wally has...
I have a question, Pam.
You said you're gonna send it to us under separate cover. That's just for us to look at and then change and do whatever we want to do after we send you. We're gonna send you our recommendations for the goals. And then you're gonna incorporate them into a something and send them back to us to take a look at them. And then we'll discuss them.
Would I like, yes, I'd like to regroup with staff. I'd like to come up with an appropriate timeline that I can then send out on how we move this along. And then, yes, I'll resend out what the draft is so that you can look at that. You can send in your input, and then we can, you'll be provided materials before the next work session, and we'll regroup and talk about them.
Okay, thank you.
And can we get everybody else's input that comes in? Because I think that helps, so we're not recreating the wheel. As people...
Yeah, I'll confer with staff on exactly how we negotiate all that with open meeting laws, but we'll, we'll settle that.